Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for two matters today. Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, to my far-right Councilman, Robert Stokes, 12th District, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Danny McCray, 2nd District Member of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee, walking in shortly, to my immediate right and I, Garrett Staff, to the Committee. By a show of hands, who is here for the Council Bill 24-0587, which is a conditional use conversion of a single-family home on 1800 Block of Broadway? Okay, we're gonna, we're going to, despite the request from the lead sponsor of the big bill, I'm gonna run through that, and I'm gonna run through that laser quickly. So, that bill, 24-0587, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the RE zoning district, variances 1817 Broadway is now called to order. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency?
Law Department approves.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development, we respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Excellent, and no need for a name or title for this one. I know all you guys. Mr. Chizow, Planning Commission, favorable with amendments?
Yes, for three units due to the variances.
Say that again?
The Planning Commission recommended three units as opposed to four because of the degree of variances.
Okay, we will amend as such. BMZA, none as of this writing. Mr. Chanel, we're good there?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DOT?
No objection.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
No objection.
Thank you. Parking Authority?
Favorable.
Thank you. Fire Department? None as of this writing. BDC?
Favorable, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions for our city agencies? Excellent. Any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Seeing as there are none, colleagues, is there a, we have that amendment? Colleagues, is there a motion to move that amendment? Motion by Stokes, second by Costello. All those in favor of the amendment say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Amendment carries. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended? Motion by Stokes, second. Second by Costello. Costello's a yes. Stokes? McCray? Dorsey?
Because I believe inherently in the right to multifamily housing and the convention of councilmatic courtesy, yes.
Dorsey is a yes. This bill moves as second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council of Baltimore. Next up, Council Bill 24-0599, zoning conditional use crematorium. I'll turn it over to Councilman Mark Conway, lead sponsor of the bill, for brief introductory remarks. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, appreciate everybody here today. It looks like we have a packed room. I'm looking forward to the feedback on the bill. This bill, actually, I'm gonna start from why I brought it forward. Today, incinerators are banned across the city, and to that effect, many folks who could theoretically have a crematorium, funeral home directors and cemeteries, assume that they did not have the ability to have a crematorium. It wasn't until maybe four years ago that Von Green, in my district, sought to get a permit to get a crematorium, that that was ever even challenged. We have today four crematoriums across the city, one at Loudoun Park, one in Bayview, one at Brown Funeral Homes, and one at Greenmount. Three of those are in cemeteries, one is in a funeral home. Three are in cemeteries, one are in a funeral home. All of those would be grandfathered in. So, today, you know, up until the prospect of opening a crematorium was considered by Von Green, folks assumed that crematoriums were not allowed across the city because crematoriums are incinerators, incinerators are crematoriums, they are one in the same. But, through Von Green's efforts and a number of court cases, the court decided that there was a difference between an incinerator and a crematorium. A crematorium is used to burn human remains and pet remains, and an incinerator is used to burn waste. They look the same, they function the same, they have the same technologies, they look almost exactly the same if you were to look at them. They both function exactly the same way by incinerating the remains inside. So, that's what got us here. It begged the question, whether it makes sense for every place that there is a funeral home, does it make sense for every funeral home to have the ability to have a crematorium? I'm here today, and I presented this bill, because I don't believe that should be the case. Today funeral homes, and therefore crematoriums, are allowed in C2, C3, and C4. And today we have 46 funeral homes across the city. We'll have testimony later on about some of that information. There's a map that is prevented, it's provided to the entire committee, and it's available there for the public to see. Of those 46 funeral homes, this bill would have an impact on 18. There are 18 funeral homes in C2. So, to put it into perspective, what this bill would do is, it would suggest, it would, actually, pretty simply state, the bill copies the exact locations where funeral homes and crematoriums are allowed, excuse me, funeral homes and cemeteries are allowed. Funeral homes are allowed in C2, 3, 4, and cemeteries are allowed in open space. The bill copies those places over and removes C2. The reason why we remove C2 is because C2 is designed to be next to and within close proximity to densely populated neighborhoods, businesses, restaurants, and other things that, when we go back to the question of whether or not it makes sense for every funeral home to have the opportunity to add a crematorium to their business in the location where they currently are, I don't believe in instances where you are near densely populated neighborhoods or in densely populated business districts that it makes sense to do so. So, as we thought this through, we realize that there is a growing need for cremations. Folks want an affordable way to, you know, take care of their loved ones. I myself will be cremated in some way, shape, or form. I already know that, and many other people here may decide to do the same. So, there is certainly a need across the city for cremations. I think the real question, though, is, does it make sense to have cremations in our neighborhoods, in our homes, or next to our homes, next to our businesses? When you go to a restaurant, and you're thinking about what you want to eat, and you want to eat outdoors, do you think that restaurant would do well with a crematorium across the street or next door? I would think not. I think that would hurt a restaurant. When you bought your home 10 years ago, and you live next to a funeral home, and primarily today that funeral home serves as an event space, people come for funerals and they leave, much in the same way that a church would operate, people come and they go. When that funeral home now has the opportunity to open a crematorium, does that affect your property values? Does that affect your health and welfare and anything else about the decision you made 10 years ago, five years ago, whatever the case is? I think it does. And so, as we think about, you know, sensible crematorium policy for the city, knowing that crematoriums are not considered the same exact thing as incinerators and are not banned across the city, how do we do so sensibly? And that's why I came forward with this bill. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I, you know, look forward to the discussion. I see we have a number of funeral homes here, and talking about this bill and introducing this bill, I reached out to every funeral home that I had a number for, understood their concerns, and tried to balance as best as possible the need to meet their consumers' demand. And today, I want to be clear, that demand is already met, it's just the reality that that demand is met by, you know, transporting corpses elsewhere in order to be cremated. So, that is what happens for funeral homes across the city today.
Thank you, Councilman Conway, for your leadership on bringing this issue in front of the council. It's wonderful to be with so many people in this industry, not at your place of business today. So, so, quick run-through of how we're gonna do today's hearings. So, and this is kind of standard, we're gonna go through each of our agencies, very similar to what we did, it was a little laser quick during the last hearing, so we will get their feedback on the bill. And then council members will ask questions of those agencies, and then we will take public testimony. When we get to that point, I'll give a little more information on the ground rules around public testimony. So, let's get started with our city agencies. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Anything you want to add?
No, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Excellent, thank you. Planning Commission, favorable? Thank you. Anything to add from Planning Commission deliberations of relevance?
No, we're here for answering questions if any come up.
Excellent. BMZA?
No position.
Thank you. DOT?
With sent by our bill report of no objection.
Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
The Office of Equity and Civil Rights makes no recommendation. I'd be happy to elaborate if requested.
Excellent. Parking Authority?
Favorable.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office of Government Relations, on behalf of the Fire Department. The Fire Department took no position, but just wanted to lift up that, obviously, any crematoriums or incinerators have to abide by the city code and on fire regulations.
I know our fire marshal is a stickler about that, expected nothing less. Baltimore Development Corporation?
Favorable, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, unless there's any concerns, I'm gonna excuse DOT, BDC, and Parking Authority. Any concerns? You all are, please enjoy the rest of your day, whatever else exciting you have planned for today. Okay. And any Office of Equity and Civil Rights, any concern with letting those folks go? Any concern? Okay, sir, your excuse too? Yep. Have a wonderful day. Okay. All right, colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Stokes? McCray? Dorsey? No questions for our city agencies? Councilman Conway? Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Public testimony? The floor is yours, Councilwoman. We'll figure it out.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I don't know if this is for the sponsor, if it's for like a city agency who can explain this, but can someone just explain the functional, just clarify the functional and technical differences between a crematorium and an incinerator?
That's a great question. I can, I'm happy to answer that. So, Councilwoman, the, I didn't know that there was a difference. So, technically, a crematorium is an incinerator. I think, though, for the purposes of how the law looks at it, and the decision made by the courts as Von Green has gone through their process, they see them differently simply because a crematorium is used to burn human remains and animal remains, and an incinerator is used to burn waste. But, they are, they're actually the same thing, similar, very similar technology.
Have we looked at the impact that this would have on, on our businesses that are within Baltimore City, who are servicing, in many of these funeral homes within Baltimore City, that they're owned and operated by African-Americans, within communities that are African-American communities? So, have we looked at what the financial impact would be if this bill is put through? On the businesses and also the communities that they serve?
So, I'll attempt to answer that question. So, the bill has an impact on 18 funeral homes. There are 18 funeral homes in C2. What the bill simply does is it removes C2 from consideration. It still allows it in C3, 4, and open space. Open space is where cemeteries are. So, you could theoretically still have a crematory at a cemetery. It's really hard to say those back-to-back, so forgive me if I mix those up. We don't have like a full economic analysis of what it might mean. I'll say, what you see, we are the densest city in the state, so there is no animal quite like Baltimore when it comes to the impact of, you know, sources of pollution and business types within zoning districts. You know, I think there are a number of instances in which we don't put types of uses next to each other because they don't work well next to each other. For instance, we don't put industrial uses typically very close to neighborhoods and stuff like that. There are some exceptions to that, but that is generally not the way that we move forward. And I think what I'm posing here is that, certainly, we still need the ability for cremation. We still need our funeral homes and certainly our cemeteries to have the ability to deal with the demand from their customers. But, I think we don't want to over-commit to that demand by allowing it in places where it may not make sense. And I think this is where the C2 designation needs a little bit more nuance. C2 is commercial. It is commercial that is intended to be close to and nearby densely populated neighborhoods and near businesses. And I do believe that it would have a significant impact on businesses, especially ones that, you know, like food, things like that. I do think it would have an impact on restaurants and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Councilman Stokes?
My question is, funeral homes provide a service, and a lot of times, families can't afford the price of funerals, it's very expensive. So, when you do cremation, it gives a lot of families, poor families in this city, an opportunity to afford that. So, the service that's there, what would this bill do if it passes? Because I know Brown Funeral Home was in the paper, but that was $5,000. And a lot of people can't afford $5,000, that's why they do cremation, sometimes 1,700, between 1,700 and 2,500. What happens if this bill passed? Do now funeral homes either lose their business, because if somebody still want to do cremation, they gonna go to a funeral home that does it. They not gonna go to other funeral homes and say, can you take this body to a third party and have it cremated? So, my colleague was actually talking about how it impacts business. It also impacts people or persons in the city who can't fi, afford $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 for a funeral. So, we need to look at that. And again, I'll go back, and just the first two words I said, it's a service that they provide. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Conway?
I agree with you 100% Councilman, I think you're 100% right. I think part of the reason I put the bill forward in this way is I think we do need to keep avenues open for funeral homes to provide that service. There's an increasing demand that, very realistically, they're gonna try to want to meet, to meet. That said, I think today, the way we meet it still provides for affordable burial options and ways of cremating your loved ones if necessary. The difference is, today, that requires them transporting the bodies to someone else. And my understanding from folks in the industry, because I've talked to probably everyone in this room in some way, shape, or form, is not so much the cost. I think probably the strongest argument that I've heard from folks is that they want custody of the body all the way through, and they want to be able to assure folks that their loved ones are their loved ones, and there's no confusion there. So, I think, and that's a very reasonable ask, I think you have to balance that necessity with the reality of our neighborhoods. You know, you have to think about the families, you have to think about the businesses and otherwise that will be affected by the decision for someone to do on their property what technically they can do right now. And I think, you know, this was not an issue until we acknowledged that today funeral homes have the ability to have crematoria. That was not necessarily the case four years ago. I think most folks assumed it was not the case. Now that we know that is the case, I think it's our duty to make sure that that is done so responsibly. Because while it may cost you an extra, I don't know, $1,000, let's go crazy and call it an extra $1,000 for that funeral operator to, instead of doing the cremation in-house, to send the body somewhere else, it may cost more money, but what do you think it's gonna cost the businesses? What do you think it's gonna cost the homeowners, these middle-class families in these black neighborhoods that are just trying to stay afloat? And they see their property values hit, and the generational wealth that may have ramifications as a result? I think there's a way to do both, and that's what I attempted to do in the bill. I think one of the key considerations for why we pulled C2 out and left it in C3 and C4 is that C3 and C4 comes with setbacks already. There are sort of differences in how C4 properties operate, they're generally larger, they generally have like parking lots in the front, things like that, that set them back from the community, that make a much more sense for this kind of use. So, if we're just talking about someone coming in and folks attending a ceremony and leaving, I think funeral homes, you know, they are totally fine in C2. I think when you have instances where you have more than that, you have folks coming and going, that's fine. But, when you have, you know, consistent cremations happening, I think that does have an impact on businesses, that does have an impact on property values, and I think that's where it makes sense for us as a council to be thoughtful about the use and where it makes sense to allow it.
Stokes? Thank you. Just a comment. I know we, I talked about costs, and I'm gonna still stay with that, but the other cost is, what about the families that nobody have insurance? Mr. March, I always call him, somebody don't have insurance. So, if they can afford to pay, or 1,700 or 2,500 for a cremation, now you have $5,000 that they're offering up. So, I'm saying is, we gotta look at the cost on both sides, the service, and a lot of families in the city, their kids don't have no insurance, their family members don't have no insurance. So, just a thought that we need to think about while we're having this hearing. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think the reality is that that need is being met today. So, our funeral homes, who are funeral home operators who are here, they're charging somewhere between $1,700 and $3,500 for cremation, roughly, is what I've heard the prices sort of range from. They're doing that today, they will continue to do that, the need will be met. The question is, does that need to be met, does that need need to be met inside our communities, inside our neighborhoods, and in close proximity to densely populated neighborhoods? And I think this bill attempts to delicately balance that in a way that it doesn't always have to be that way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing that there are none. By a quick show of hands, please raise your hand if you have signed up to testify. Okay. Is there anyone who has not signed up to testify, has not signed up to testify that wishes to testify? Okay, we'll do another call for that. Okay, we will start public testimony. When I call your name, I'm gonna ask you to come up to the lectern here. There are two buttons in the bottom right, I'm going to ask you to press the button in the bottom right, that will light up the dashboard red, and you will see the ring around at the top be read, that means you're good to talk. When you're done speaking, please turn off the microphone. Public testimony is gonna be limited to two minutes per person, that's pretty standard in this committee. When you are testifying, when you start, please say your full name and the organization that you're representing, whether that's ABC Funeral Parlour or XYZ Neighborhood Association. When you are testifying, please address your comments to the council, not members of the audience, ask that everyone be respectful so that we give everybody an opportunity to be heard today. Any concerns or questions about the ground rules before we begin? Excellent, thank you. I will take that silence as everyone is in agreement. Let's start off, Victor March Senior. And we will have a, yep, clock is up on the screen, I'm gonna make some hand gestures when you get to two minutes, and then progressively, my interruptions will be less and less polite as we proceed. Thank you, Mr. March.
Thank you very much, Chairman Costello and the members of the City Council. Good morning, my name is Victor March, and I'm the President and CEO of March Funeral Homes. March Funeral Homes is a family-owned and operates six funeral homes in Maryland, including one crematory in Prince George's County, Maryland. March Funeral also operates one funeral home in District of Columbia, as well as one funeral home in Richmond, Virginia, as well as 155-acre cemetery in Baltimore County. Historically, African-American funeral homes have been located in the center of African-American residential communities across America. African-American funeral home owners and operators take great pride in the communities that they serve and strive to be good neighbors. March Funeral has invested million, millions of dollars in the communities of Baltimore, including East Baltimore, West Baltimore, as well as Govins. And March Funeral employs over 80 people in Baltimore City alone. Bill 24-0599 disproportionately impacts the economic viability of African-American funeral homes in Baltimore. Cremation and crematories have been synonymous with funeral homes and cemeteries in Baltimore City, and historically include the word crematorium as a matter of right in the zoning definition of funeral homes. Proponents of this bill seek not only to remove crematoriums as a matter of right from the historically zoning definition of funeral home, but also intend to restrict the location of funeral homes in a commercial district to C3 and C4 as permitted with use. More than 50% based on your calculation of funeral homes in Baltimore are operated by African-American funeral homes. Only one funeral home in Baltimore City has a crematory. Not one funeral home out of the funeral homes located in the city are in C3 and C4 commercial districts. Not one African-American funeral home is located in C3 or C4. Consequently, this bill impacts disproportionately African-American funeral homes. As written, this bill disproportionately impacts the economic viability of African-American funeral homes in Baltimore, forces residents in Baltimore City to seek essential services outside this city, limits consumer choice, increases prices, creates an economic hardship on families.
Mr. March, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up as quickly as you can. Thank you.
And, one, there's no evidence to sustain that pollutants affect the health of neighbors, and there's no evidence that we are aware of home values decreasing around any crematory. I ask that you, I implore us to take and fully examine the economic impact of this bill will have on small businesses and essential services to the community, and ensure a final decision that the Baltimore City is firmly grounded in data based on science and economics. And I ask that you take this unfavorably. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dorsey, yes?
Thank you. Question for the sponsor. Do we have any testimony or facts or research on health impacts?
Yes, we do, and we have someone speaking to some of those pieces today. Yes, someone will testify.
Okay. And is there anything, any kind of primer that you can provide in a statement or two?
I will leave that to the expert for which I am not. I will say, we as a city, it is technically not within our power to control the pollution, which is why most of my argument has not been about pollution, although there is a responsibility there insofar as how it impacts neighborhoods. So, MDE is responsible for managing pollution and limiting or preventing where possible. I do think, though, it is one of the considerations for why we should be thoughtful, but we can't sit here and, you know, measure tit-for-tat how much and how it impacts. But, we do have an expert here who literally does this work for a living and can speak about some of the impacts that we know come from incineration.
Thanks, I just, it's not lost on me that, you know, while zoning in general over the last 100 years, and uniquely so in the United States, has become this kind of disgusting means of segregating housing based on... of segregating housing based on, you know, willful racism, that before, in the early twentieth century, federal leaders and state and local leadership, especially here in Baltimore City, took it in that direction, its sole purpose was to say that industrial use belongs over here and not with everything else. And everything else was allowed to exist together, but industrial use doesn't belong with everything else, and that there is essentially no scientific or mechanical difference between one form of an incinerator or another. There's no distinction in what happens other than what you're putting into it, whether it be human remains or mattresses. And that while we regard incinerators in general as an industrial product, an industrial mechanism, it's bizarre to me that it would be acceptable to have just a lessened form for, you know, lessened in volume or whatever form of this industrial use allowable immediately adjacent to, as you said, you know, a cafe, a restaurant, you know, boutique, home goods sales store, my house, an apartment building, a neighborhood school, you know, a recovery center, a doctor's office, any of these things. And the reason that we put industrial uses over there and not here next to those things is because there are inherent adverse health impacts to their presence and proximity to them. So I look forward to hearing some of that. It's just totally bizarre to me that that health is somehow outside of the scope of what one should deem considerable in terms of zoning when it's literally, public health is the bedrock of why zoning exists as a concept, and that when the zoning board, for example, rules on any matter that is before them, it is whether or not it is in the public health interest, public safety interest, that the decision be made. And so I don't, I don't really buy the idea that it's not something that we should have as, I think, actually a paramount concern. Thank you.
Lisa Poliak. Am I saying that correct?
I'm a novice, so. No, I said I'm a novice. Do I have to?
Oh, you're a novice. Nervous or novice, you'll be fine. Yep, you're good to go.
All right. Hi, my name's Lisa Poliak, and I'm an environmental engineer, and for the last thirty-five years I've worked for the Army and the Department of Defense on environmental health and environmental compliance issues. And I have three key points to make, two of which are related to your handout. On one side, you'll see a map of funeral homes. Oh, okay. Is that good?
You can move the thing like, yeah, closer. You want to be about six inches away from your mouth, from the microphone.
Better?
No, no, no. Other direction. Pull it closer.
Better?
Much better.
Better, okay. All right, I direct your attention to the handout that was in your packet, and on one side you'll see a map of funeral homes located in Baltimore. Councilman Conway has told you there's about forty-six in the city, and currently the zoning allows funeral homes to have a crematory incinerator in three zones, C2, C3, and C4. But there's nothing in the code currently that prohibits funeral homeowners in other districts from petitioning to place a crematory no matter where the zoning is. So many of the funeral homes on this map are located in residential settings, and I think every member here today has at least two or more funeral homes in their district. My second point is that I can tell you, based on the thirty years of my career, that the US EPA and the Maryland Department of the Environment have literally no idea what type or what amount of pollution comes out of these crematories. The way that MDE issues air permits is by estimating stack emissions from factors that EPA published over thirty years ago, factors, in fact, that bear no resemblance to what currently goes into modern crematories, because the American Medical Association has told us that at least ten percent of adults have an implanted cosmetic or medical device in their bodies at some point in their lifetime, and all of these materials would go into the crematory. We also know that an industry has sprung up that's called cremation recycling that takes the bottoms that come out of crematories and uses it to provide revenue back to the crematory owner because of the metals that are present. Among the hundred and sixteen crematories that are currently operating in Maryland with an MDE air permit, the number that have had a stack test to measure the emissions that come out of the stack is exactly zero. The number of crematories with a filter or a scrubber to control the emissions that come out of their stack is exactly zero. My last point. On the other side of the handout, you'll see a map of the environmental justice scores of Baltimore, and those that are in dark blue have environmental justice scores of between seventy-five and one hundred, where one hundred represents citizens who have both the highest exposure to environmental hazards and the most serious health problems in the state. The neighborhood in District Four, where I'm helping, the York Road Partnership, where a crematory is currently proposed, has an EJ score of ninety-five. Ninety-five, meaning that the citizens who live in that district have more, are more vulnerable from a health standpoint than ninety-five percent of the citizens in Maryland. These proposed changes to the zoning code will allow funeral homeowners to both build their crematories in places that don't impact families and neighborhoods and schools. I think it's a win-win. I encourage a favorable vote, and I'm available to answer questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Kay.
It's Gooch.
Not good at reading handwriting other than my own.
Oh, I know. It's bad. I apologize. All right, thank you all for taking our testimony today. Better? Oh, yeah. My name is Kay Gooch, and I'm here representing Govens Presbyterian Church. I am an elder there and also represent the governing board here and speaking today. Most of you know, many of you may know that Govens Presbyterian Church has been an anchor on the York Road Partnership for many years, decades, and has worked to provide assistance for citizens all along the corridor. We're here to, I just, we're here today to just share our experience as we've had it for the last few years related to the proposed crematorium in our neighborhood with our neighbors. And I want to reiterate that, as you see, there are many funeral homes without, throughout the city, and all of you have the opportunity to have one of these built in your neighborhood too, if you don't change the zoning today, which we are encouraging. The main thing that I want to reemphasize is what was just brought up, the environmental justice concept that we're looking for here, that also, and that these, the locations of these crematories, these incinerators within our neighborhoods can be within feet of schools, feet of homes, feet of restaurants, grocery stores, all the facilities that we currently have in our communities. So when you think about how this could impact, as Congressman Conway has said several times now, if you are a homeowner who worked really hard to get into this neighborhood, if you're a community organization like York Road Partnership, which I'm a part of, and Govens Presbyterian is a part of, and we've worked very hard to encourage change, to get new homes, new businesses within our community, it's putting an incinerator with a stack that sends out unrecognizable emissions, it's not what's going to encourage our neighborhoods to grow and thrive. So I'd encourage you to support this change. It's not a change that says that no crematoriums can be built, it's a change that limits where they can be. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Donna Blackwell? Did I get that right?
You got that right. My name...
Turn the mic on, bottom right button, red ring.
Okay, here we go. My name is Donna Blackwell. I am a resident of Winston-Govens Neighborhood Association, well, area, and I'm also Vice President of the York Road Partnership. I am here to lift up the notion of environmental justice. Environmental justice is one of the buzzwords you'll hear in the lexicon of the world, and we, as a community of black, white, and purple people, have to come together to reconcile, repair, and imagine a different world. Imagine a world where our children's, children's, children will be able to breathe clean air, will be able to come up with bright ideas about what their world looks like and not be, not be bogged down with health issues like breathing. There are so many young children. I'm sixty-four years old, and there are eight-year-olds who have asthma. So we need to think about the health issues, the health concerns that will be affecting not only them, but as I get older, I'm sure I'll have issues, but that is one thing that I do want to bring up. This is an environmental issue that we need to come together as people to come up with a better solution for how we, how we do business, how we communicate, and how we live with one another. Thank you.
Thank you. We are all purple people in this city, with the exception of a few unnamed Steelers fans that I will not dox in a public setting. Eric March.
My name is Eric March. I'm General Manager, March Funeral Homes. Thank you for listening to me. I'm sorry we came up so early in the conversation because I want to address the emotions in a reasonable way. I want to bring up the science versus the emotions. First of all, I want to say that the human body is eighty percent water. We are literally burning up water, not chemicals, where those metal instruments that are in people do not burn, where we confiscate them after the incineration. Death is a scary subject. It causes a lot of emotions. The reason it's so scary is because it's a hundred percent. The death rate is a hundred percent. We're all gonna die, that's for sure. In the black community, cremation wasn't really an issue because customarily, our cremation rate was like less than five percent, whereas the Caucasian community is approaching sixty percent. Well, now, according to what was said here early, economics has changed that. It's no longer a taboo to burn up mother, okay? So now, our cremation rate is thirty percent, as opposed to under five percent. That means one in every three deaths is being cremated today, and that, that's only gonna go up. And my brother's already testified, and Councilman Stokes has already alluded to the fact that it's gonna affect black funeral homes disproportionately, because black funeral homes are in Baltimore City. And Councilman, you're right, the funeral home is close to other businesses. Why? Because the funeral home is a community business, just like the restaurant, the church, and the barber shop. We're in where people deserve to come to us locally and be served. They expect us to serve, they expect us to have the custody of the body, a hundred percent, not farm it out to somebody else. So it affects the black businesses disproportionately. This bill is bad, not only for us, but for the families we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey.
I have a question for Mr. March.
Mr. March, if you could come back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. March, are there funeral homes, to your knowledge, that do, I don't know how to put it, offer to be a conduit for cremation, provide other funeral homes or services on-site, but all, but, but have performed the cremation function off-site from their main funeral home, whether done in-house by something that the funeral home owns?
Mr. March, Councilman, if I may, I'm gonna try and summarize your question. I think I got it.
Yeah.
I think what the councilman is asking is, are there funeral homes that outsource the cremation function?
Well, either, either in-house at a separate facility owned by the same corporation or outsourced to some third party, and I want, I don't even know if it's legal to outsource it to a third party, and I wanted to know if there's a breakdown of those.
So just to summarize, are there funeral parlors or homes that either A, outsource their cremation function to a different funeral parlor slash crematorium, or are there funeral parlors who have a separate facility off-site for cremation function? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Please.
Yes, they have no choice. A family comes to a funeral home that does not have a stone crematory, that funeral home either serves the family by sending it elsewhere and loses chain of custody, and the families have to be informed that we are not able to perform the service for you. And that makes them decide, well, maybe I need to go to another funeral home. Okay? Now, the problem...
So, Mr. March, if I may, just to confirm, I think you're answering the councilman's question in affirmative, that there are off-site options for a funeral home. However, that comes with the potential risk of losing the business.
Correct.
Did I summarize correctly?
Absolutely correct.
Thank you. Please continue. Do you have anything to add to that direct answer to Councilman Dorsey's question?
That answers half the question.
Well, I can only say this. If the funeral home cannot build a crematory on its property, then it has to purchase land, build, construct, which most funeral homes can't afford to expand to that degree.
Got, got it. I don't mean to cut you off, but your point was very salient and well-taken. Councilman Dorsey, did that answer your question, correct?
Not exactly. Are there businesses, to your knowledge, that do have their own off-site?
There are independent services outside of Baltimore that they would have to go to.
So in general, you're not aware of any funeral home that owns its own crematorium off-site from its funeral parlor location?
No, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. I think he answered. Conway?
Mr. March, where do you do your cremations?
We have a funeral home in Laurel that has a crematory.
So for your Baltimore City sites, you keep, you maintain custody of the body, but you do your cremations in Laurel?
Yes, because we're fortunate enough to have multiple locations.
I think that was the question the councilman was asking.
So, so the, so you are an example of a funeral parlor in the city that does your crematorium action?
We may be the only one.
At, at, at another facility that you own and control.
Correct.
So that answers your question, Dorsey, correct? And Conway, thank you for, okay, we're, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. March. Okay. Dan Pontius? We know your son.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Dan Pontius. I'm President of the York Road Partnership and also the Radnor-Winston Improvement Association, which is the neighborhood directly across York Road from the Vaughn Green Funeral Home. York Road Partnership is a coalition of thirty-seven neighborhoods, nonprofit organizations, places of worship, schools, along both sides of the York Road Corridor, working together to improve quality of life in, on the corridor, both neighborhoods, and we want thriving commercial businesses on the corridor as well. And I can say, and we have just gained healthy neighborhood status, because as in, as many middle neighborhoods in the city, especially black middle neighborhoods, marketing those to new homeowners is really something that we need to do to preserve the vitality of those communities. And I can say, you know, we are primarily, York Road Partnership, standing in solidarity with the Winston-Govens neighborhood and the Richener Springs neighborhood, which are the neighborhoods right with, that have homes with less than two hundred feet from where this crematorium would be burning bodies. But I can say, from my neighborhood, we, two young families have already moved out of our neighborhood. One lived on Croson Avenue right near York Road, another on Radnor Road, right at York Road. Two families have already moved out of the neighborhood because of this proposed crematorium. And so it's gonna affect our communities. And so, it's gonna affect our communities, um, as we go forward. I also want to, I also am aware, uh, there are funeral homes that, that own their own crematorium. The Mitchell-Wiedfeld Funeral Home farther up York Road owns Delaney Valley Memorial Gardens, has a crematorium there. So, there are, uh, this, funeral homes were cited at a time, as you've heard, when crematorium was, there was a stigma. It was a rare thing. That is no longer the case, as you've, as you've heard testify. This is becoming more and more popular. Implants, uh, are more and more popular. So, those are metals that are gonna get burned. And if these crematories are allowed to locate, you know, in neighborhoods, which is where a lot of these communities, uh, funeral homes are, uh, those communities are gonna be exposed to that pollution. So, this is, this is the, a, a totally appropriate role for zoning for a body like this. Uh, Howard County regulates crematoria separate from funeral homes. Uh, Sacramento County, California, has a five-hundred-foot setback. The, the courts have recognized this is an appropriate use of, of zoning power, and this is an example where you could be responding to changing circumstances. Increased crematorium, crematory, cremation, uh, increased pollutions coming from bodies. And so, uh, you could appropriately segregate the, the uses, uh, from neighborhoods that are vulnerable and need, need new homeowners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, mm, last name Lanzy? Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Neil Lanzy. I'm an attorney with Wright, Constable, and Skeen. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Von C. Green Funeral Services, P.A., and M&amp;G Property Management, Two LLC. M&amp;G Property is the owner of the property, and Von Green is the owner of the business at, at the location. I'd like to start with this, uh, kind of my conclusion of the submittal that we gave to every member of this, of this committee a few weeks ago. And the conclusion is, the Baltimore Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, the Circuit Court for Baltimore City, the Appellate Court of Maryland, and MDE have all agreed and established that the crematorium that's the subject of this bill will not adversely affect the public health, and thus, we would request that that bill not be adopted. So, um, and the reason I brought this stack up is listening to some of the questions asked today. I don't think that you, I don't think you've all had the pleasure of reading this from some of the questions. One of the first questions, I think, came from you, Councilman Dorsey, about the, is there any science? Well, there's five reports from our toxicologist, who is well-recognized and believed as credible, um, at the Circuit Court level, at the MDE level, at the Board of Municipal and Zoning. So, I suggest or urge you to please read her five reports. Her most recent report was provided for this committee, um, and that, I believe, was October, October twenty-second. It would be one of the last documents in the report. So, um, having said that, the letter, um, that went with this report, which I had authored, I think it'll give you the summary, which is what you need, um, for the, for the date this all started, which was June of two thousand twenty. And it started with a letter from, um, Jeffrey Veale, the zoning supervisor, indicating that crematory is part of a funeral home. Well, that was a fast two minutes.
Sure was.
Can I have an extra thirty seconds? I think I heard some other. Okay. Thank you. So, you know, the conclusion of, of, of Dr. Carla Kinslow, which was probably the most important, I know we're not talking about, uh, health and science because this is zoning, but part of the burden that the petitioner had to prove at the zoning hearing was that the public health would be protected. And Maryland, as testified by Dr. Kinslow, has one of the strictest, if not strictest, regulations for MDE and air permits. So, and also to address some of the comments made today, um, this is a minority neighborhood, a minority business. Um, cremator, cremations are less expensive, so will, will be impact on the community there. They do want to keep the, uh, family members, you know, that pass in, in-house. Um, so, I would, I would again urge you to please read this report, the summary. Um, let me just get a couple more points across. And, and it was just commented, I believe in facts, and there's a comment about mercury and teeth. Well, that was a specific condition of the Baltimore City zoning order. That's a specific condition of the state of Maryland air quality permit that, that will be issued. They have to remove, um, the amalgams, the teeth, the fake teeth, okay? So, let me see if there's anything else.
Ask you to, to wrap up?
I will.
We're getting-
Okay. So, you'll see the timeline, that there were, the filing of the air quality permit in June of twenty, three days of testimony and zoning hearings. We had the Circuit Court, the Appellate Court of Maryland, MDE had a number of informational meetings. They had a public, uh, hearing, informational meeting in August of this year. They have numerous conditions. I think it's the strictest condition that have ever been issued an air quality permit. They've limiting the number of family members, um, or bodies that can be, um, burned. So, I would, I would again suggest that you re-
Sir?
Yes?
So, we're gonna-
One final, one final comment.
Very final.
Another comment about, um, no testing, no, no standards. Again, Maryland has the toughest regulations, and there's gonna be an independent stack test required of the machine before it can operate. So, there will be tests despite testimony. There's no evidence to really back up some of the allegations that have been made today.
Thank you for your testimony. Please hang tight. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you represent Von Green Funeral-
That's correct.
Yes, that is the proposed one, uh, in my district. Um, I'm curious, um, does Von Green own other locations?
Yes, and that's one of the conditions of the zoning case, zoning order, and that only family members can be-
Quickly, for, for, there how many locations?
I believe it's five.
Five locations?
And only family members of Von Green customers can, they could come to Von Green. So, they can't, they can't be a crematory for out, you know, other, other families.
What, do you know the zones for those, those locations and how they'd be impacted by the bill? I, I don't even know the answer to that question. I'm asking you.
Well, they have the, the, obviously, the, the subject location in Govens. Then they have another location that's, kind of splits the Baltimore City-Baltimore County line. Um, and then I believe all the rest of them are in Baltimore County.
In the county.
Correct.
Um, and, um, has, have, have they considered, uh, crematorium, uh, crematoriums for the other locations?
They're always looking at various options, but, you know, they've obviously invested a lot of time, effort, um, finances, and, you know, and, and working with the MDE this whole time as well. So, are they, are they-
So, they have considered the other locations?
Are they looking at other locations?
Sure.
I don't know that the other locations would be suitable. But if they, if they do, it wouldn't be, you know, there isn't really any other option in Baltimore City of, of a property that they own there now. So, it would be outside of your jurisdiction, it would be in the county.
Uh, I guess I'm-
And I don't know how that's relevant to this, this-
No, no, I, I, I'm gonna explain how it's relevant. Um, I'm trying to assess, um, because going back to Councilman Dorsey's question about funeral homes that have the opportunity to do their cremations outside of C-two districts, outside of certain sites, outside of locations around deeply, densely populated neighborhoods, that's what I'm trying to get to. Um, so, with the five locations that Von Green has, my question about whether or not they've considered using those locations, um, first, and then, two, the zoning for those locations, of course, the ones in the county, I don't know. I would imagine they're not in as densely populated locations. I believe this is their most densely populated location that they're considering one for.
That's not necessarily so.
Okay.
And, you know, other, other locations are in, are in neighborhoods as well.
Okay.
You know, this is on York Road, um, they have other locations that are on main roads, but there are neighborhoods right there.
Yeah.
And pretty much, my understanding of the industry is funeral homes are generally located within neighborhoods, um, you know, and, and they serve that neighborhood where they're located. But I do, I did want to emphasize that they have to outsource, a family member needs, um, they wish to be cremated, they have to go to a third-party. They don't have a facility that they own or can go to.
Right. So, they, they are able to meet the need today, but they outsource to sort of contract the source.
And they lose, and you lose the custody of, you know, as I believe Mr. March stated.
But they do offer cremations for families that come to them?
Yeah, they have to go out to a, a third-party. Off-site.
And their, their major argument here, um, for why they want to do it in this particular location, is they want to control custody of the body, right?
That's one of the reasons they, like, they, they want to provide a service to the community, and they also want to, um, have the family be at peace, knowing that the remains are with the funeral home.
Oh, dude, um, I, I, I know we're on different ends, uh, of this particular location. Um, that's not why I'm asking you these questions. Um, the, the bill is intended to resolve a concern for the city. And I think, for me, um, Von Green just highlighted, I think, a gap in what should be controlled for the city. And so, not, not trying to beat up Von Green at all, that's not what this is about. Um, so, you know, I ask those questions to understand how this bill would impact Von Green. Von Green has a service that they need to provide. Um, Von Green is the closest funeral home to me, and therefore, I'll probably go there. Um, I think the, the balance that we're trying to consider for this bill is, um, is it appropriate to do it in certain locations, densely populated locations? And do funeral homes like Von Green, one of the largest in the city, have the ability to consider less densely populated locations, depending on the zoning? Does this bill affect those areas? That's what I'm trying to get to.
And the basis of your logic is that there's a harm from, from a crematorium, and I don't believe there are any facts to support that.
Oh, yes.
And I, and I, and I would like to give a quote from our doctor.
Okay. Everybody quiet.
Can I finish with one quote?
No.
No?
Everybody quiet. It's a very simple instruction. Councilman, please ask your question. We're only gonna have one person speak at a time. Councilman, ask, frame your question, please.
Sure. Um, not arguing, um, pollution or harm. You've not heard much of that come out of my mouth. Um, we're talking about zoning impacts, um, how we design our neighborhoods, um, how we allow certain uses in our city. Um, we can certainly get into the, the pollution conversation, as, uh, some of the testimony here has. Um, I think what I'm trying to think about is, for the next hundred years, when we think about how we structure our city, what makes sense? Does it make sense to put cremation machines in our neighborhoods? That, that's the question that we're trying to resolve here. Um, so, I, I, you know, I, we don't need to go into pollution. If you want to, we can do that, we, we can do that. But I think the question is just that.
I understand. It's a question for scientists, and that's why I urge the report be read, and that's why I wanted to read her, her one quote. "There's no evidence the addition of a crematorium would harm public health, welfare, or the quality of life of the surrounding community." And if, if you read the, um, transcript of the zoning hearing, we had an expert real estate person, uh, with unbelievable experience testify that there is absolutely no impact, no evidence of impact on real estate values from the existing funeral homes and crematories. So.
One person just testified to the pollution impacts three minutes ago? Another person testified to two folks moving out because of the proposed crematorium, and I, I personally know of many more. I got all the emails, if you want to see them. Um, so, I, to say that that's not happening is, is just not true. So, I, I, once again, I'm trying to balance what I know you guys need by ways of the ability to have a crematorium with the realities of our neighborhoods. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very well.
Thank you both very much. Uh, Ms. Selter?
I emailed you, sir.
Ms. Selter, please, per the instructions at the beginning, just in, address, I, I'm, just address the council.
I emailed you all yesterday.
You need to speak into the microphone.
I emailed you all my-
Ms. Selter?
Yes.
Ms. Selter? You need, I, I need you to follow the, that, that's helpful. That's, that's great. Need you to follow the instructions. So, if you have a microphone there, if you could please state your name, and if you're with any association, you'll be given two minutes to testify. Please start.
Um, I'm asking for three minutes because I have the health, um, impacts.
You're, you're gonna get two minutes, like everyone else did, and then I will start.
Okay, all due respect, but this woman, um, has falsified, seems to be a cremation lover.
Ms. Selter, my patience, can you please go get security, right now? Ms. Selter?
I, I will, I will go ahead.
We've, we've been through this routine on more occasions than I am able to or would ever like to recount. Please state your full name, if you're with anyone-
My name is Shiel Selter. I'm a resident of, um, surrounded by, uh, funeral homes in Liberty Square. I empathetically ask the ordinance two-four dash, this, this one, it to be immediately withdrawn and replaced with a two-year step ordinance for the purpose of converting crematory industry to legal national natural organic soil reduction composting process known, known as natural green burials and stoppage of, of enclosed cremation process and extinguishing cremation use by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. This zoning bill actually promotes standalone crematorium industry as they take up less space falsely leading entrepreneurs to believe that this is, um, this, this fossil fuel gas, the archea gruesome business has a future. Two thousand twenty-four Maryland legalization of organic soil recom, recompensation burials on Main Ninth, Governor Moore signed the Green Death Care Option, Options Act, making legal natural organic reduction, also known as green burials, a legal state in Maryland. This law, this act commenced on, on Oc, October first, two thousand twenty-four, ironically, the day before this ordinance was introduced in City Council Meeting Chamber. Extingushes the need for crematoriums, much lower financial costs, returns soil to earth, allows to decompose without any chemicals, concrete, or synthetic materials conserves natural resources, especially fracked fossil fuel, methane, gas fuel. Cremations laden cremation addons disperse toxic pollutants into the air, water, and soil embedding food gardens. Cremation smokestacks, air emissions, chemicals include mercury, methylmercury, arsenic, lead, carbon monoxide, hydroxyl, C-E-P-A list. Cremations occur between fourteen-hundred and sixteen-hundreds, decrease Fahrenheit crematorium. Smokestacks raise heat, contributing especially to Baltimore being the seventh worst urban heat island in the United States. Sixty-six, sixty-eight percent of people in the United States from, uh, up from fifty percent, two thousand twenty-one, increased popularity for natural green burials. This is from the National Funeral Directors Association. Equal to vastly lowering financial costs than cremation variables make natural green burial costs reduce compared to cremation depends on add-ons. Costs for starting a natural green burial business is mainly refrigeration, less depth, less regulation, no risks of fires.
Ms. Selter, I'm gonna ask you-
Crematoriums, crematronics, Jewish faith, of whom relatives and ancestors were cremated in gas and gas chambers by the same gas used today in World War II and Holocaust. Muslims are, are, are gas-
Ms. Serge Graf and Wright, please get security. We're now in recess. We are now in recess.
Forced crematorium for, for Muslims.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to, we're, we're good? We are good? Thank you all. I, I appreciate you guys' service. Um, you can hand that to Ms. Garrett. Ms., Ms. Garrett, if you could please grab that from her? Thank you.
I can have it all to you, so you can read all the articles.
Thank you. Okay.
This is the EPA.
Ma'am, ma'am, this is the last time I'm gonna warn you. Your time has concluded. I want to thank you for participating in today's hearing. We will now bring Council Bill twenty-four dash zero-five-eight-seven, uh, pardon me, we will now bring Council Bill twenty-four dash zero-five-nine-nine, zoning conditional use, uh, crematorium back to order. So, we're now back in the hearing. Okay. Are there any, so, we have now gone through the entire list of people that signed up to testify? Are there any other members of the public who wish to testify? I'm gonna start with this young lady here, and then I will get you next. Uh, please, uh, come up. Same, same ground rules apply. And please, uh, make sure you hit the button on the bottom right, state your name and any organization you're affiliated with, please, and thank you.
Hello? Okay. Hello, my name is Cindy Camp, and I live dangerously close to an environmental hazard that will be on, from, that will be omitted from Von Green's proposed crematorium. I have shared my testimony many times before, but I feel like it has fallen on deaf ears, so I don't want to go back over that because I don't feel like my personal experience has been good enough. So, I would like to share a couple of definitions that I think that we miss here a lot. Unjust, that's a word, that's a meaning, not just lacking injustice or fairness, undeserved bias, prejudice, unfair, partial, and inequitable. We know that Baltimore City has a big history of that. Justice is the ethical, philosophical idea that people are to be treated impartially, fairly, properly, and reasonably by the law and by arbitrators of the law, that laws are to ensure that no harm befalls another, and that where harm is alleged, a remedial action is taken. Thank you, Mark, for that. We need regulations. I live directly in the line- I live directly in the line of fire of the hazards as long as my mom, along with my mom and my grandchildren. Environmentally, injustice occurs when certain communities are disproportionately impacted by environmental hazards and are often marginalized due to their raised ethnicity, wealth, or other factors. So, when I look around here and I see all these funeral homeowners and all the excuses they make for why a funeral home should be in my community, have anybody even come to visit or ask us anything? My closest neighbor is about to move because she's directly located behind the funeral home. We will be having parties, graduation parties, cookouts, she's directly behind the funeral home. So, as expressed before, property values will decline, people will move out. We're in marginalized communities where people can't afford to move out. My mom cannot afford to live anywhere else, she's 89 years old. So, I ask that everyone in this room reconsider and choose another location for Von Green's crematorium or any other crematoriums being built in this city. And a lot of the things that the attorney spoke here were untrue. So, I think that the signs need to be revisited, and that's, that'll be the end of my testimony.
Thank you, ma'am. I saw a gentleman in the back.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman, Costello, other members of the City Council. Hit the button, oh, it's already on. Well, I don't know much about crematories. So, what I did was, I decided to go out and find a little bit about crematories. So, I went down and I looked at the property values. At Eline Funeral Home, .4 miles away from that funeral home, property value of most houses in that area started at $112,000 in 2019, today they're $361,000. Delaney Valley, 1982, they were $72,000, today they are $368,000. I went down to New Shallow Baptist Church, I knocked on some doors, I wanted to talk to the nursing, not the nursing home, but the daycare across the street. She didn't even realize that there was a crematory across the street. None of the children there are affected, none of the parents have a problem. Went across the street to New Shallow, 5,000 members. I talked to the, I talked to Deacon Barlat, he said the senior population are comfortable, they have no issues in this community. I talked to another gentleman who mentors young teens in the hood, he said his family has no problem with any issues. I think the restricting of these 19 funeral homes, funeral homes also don't have the ability sometimes to purchase these things, the weight is driving the market. And so, that you have to give the funeral homes the opportunity to be a part of how the economic development is changing. So, to restrict them in certain areas doesn't do the funeral home justice. Those funeral homes that may be able to do it, say for instance, March, Vaughn, Wiley, you know, they have the ability to purchase those because right now, they have the community backing and they have support. But not all funeral homes have that ability, and they still need to, they still need to answer the call of their clients, and that's very important. Not in my backyard, NIMBY, it's a study that's going on. The air quality, there's 10 funeral homes, and each 10, each of those 10 funeral homes have a crematory on-site. And on their sign in Westminster, they have a sign that says crematory on-site, because that's the only way that they can compete in their neighborhood. There is a level that we have to continue to compete because we have to still work with the families, and we have to, they trust us to hold their loved ones, and we need to be able to say that we have them and they're secured. So, I thank you for this opportunity, and just want to say one last thing. The air quality in Westminster is the same as the air quality in Baltimore, we all breathe the same air.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Going once, going twice, going three times, okay. We don't have a, a quorum to take a vote, so, is standard, when we don't have a quorum, we will go into recess on the matter. I am gonna turn it over to Councilman Conway for any conclusionary remarks, which I'm certain will be brief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I really want to, you know, take a second to appreciate the, the committee for squeezing in this, this bill very late. This is really our last opportunity, I think, to move it this, this term. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for taking the opportunity here from the community, from the funeral homes, and everybody on this issue. I think this is a really, really important one for us. And while I appreciate there are very strong feelings all around, both for funeral homes and the community about this issue, I think we should be thinking about what this means for the next 100 years. We have to resolve this issue. It does not necessarily make sense in every instance that a funeral home exists, that they should have a crematorium. So, I, how do we, how do we make that make sense? I hope that we've all heard each other here today. I do expect we'll have to revisit this, but, you know, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you all, and this will be the last time I chair a hearing in these chambers.